It is six o'clock and I call the Tuesday, August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three City Commission Meeting to order. Please call the roll.
Mayor Hassel.
Here.
Commissioner Butler.
Here.
Commissioner Motta.
Here.
Commissioner Morse.
Present.
Mayor, we have four Commissioners present. The quorum of three has been met.
Very good. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty. Our first item is a proclamation for National Senior Center Month. Please join me here up front.
I'll read the proclamation and then give you two a chance to comment. Whereas older Americans are significant members of our society, investing their wisdom and experience to help enrich and strengthen our community, and whereas the Manhattan Senior Center has acted as a catalyst for mobilizing the creativity, energy, vitality, and commitment of the older residents of Manhattan and Riley County, and whereas through the wide array of services, programs, and activities, senior centers empower older citizens of the city of Manhattan and Riley County to contribute to their own health and well-being and the health and well-being of their fellow citizens of all ages, and whereas the Manhattan Senior Center in Manhattan and Riley County affirms the dignity, self-worth, and independence of older persons by facilitating their decisions and actions, tapping their experiences, skills, and knowledge, and enabling their continued contributions to the community. Now therefore, I mark Hattasol, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, to hereby proclaim September twenty twenty-three as National Senior Center Month, and call upon all citizens to recognize the special contributions of the senior center participants and the special efforts of the staff and volunteers who work every day to enhance the well-being of the older citizens of our community.
Here you go.
Thank you.
Congratulations there. Come on over here and say a few words.
Hi, I'm Liz Nelson, Director of the Manhattan Senior Center of Riley County, and I want to thank the mayor for the proclamation, and I want to acknowledge Mayor Hattasol, Linda Morse, and Wynd Butler, who have been on our board, past and current. We appreciate them very much, the input that the city always has for us. I want to thank Peggy Hexman. She's our past Chair of the Board and a very active member of the center, and I want to acknowledge the area agency on aging as being here to support us. So, thank you very much, and please come see us at the Senior Center, Fourth and Leavenworth.
Alright. Alrighty. Next item on the agenda are Commissioner comments. Commissioner Morse, anything?
No.
Okay. John?
No.
Not tonight. Alright, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which are items of a routine and housekeeping nature, items that have been previously reviewed by the Commission. A Commissioner may request an item be removed for separate discussion. Is there any questions or comments on any of the consent agenda items, Commissioners?
Let me make sure it's on the consent agenda. Hold on. Not the general. I, there we go. No, I have no comments. I would move approval. Well, we have to have public hearing.
Yeah, first of all. Alright, we will throw it open to public comment for any of the items that are on the consent agenda. Hearing no public comment, we'll close the public comment section. Now we'll take a motion. Linda?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
That's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Please call the roll.
Mr. Butler?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Mayor Hassel?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Very good. First item on the, well, the next item is a public hearing for vacating a public utility easement for Lot Two, Campus View Edition, twelve-hundred Centennial Drive. Ben?
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners. We do have in front of us a request to vacate an easement. Let's see if I can go and get the slideshow going here. Apologize. Bottom right, okay. Okay, thank you. My bad. I apologize. We have before us a request to vacate a utility easement at twelve-hundred Centennial Drive. This easement is located on the north property line of the property here. It is to orientate you to the property. This is McCall Road. I'm sorry, this is McCain Lane going up the hill. Behind here to the north is Royal Towers, seventeen-hundred North Manhattan. This current location is a fraternity on it. This easement was part of the original plat that they had. They're requesting to vacate close to ninety percent of the utility easement there. The request is so that they can build a retaining wall. I don't know if you're all familiar with that property. They have the basketball court and the barbecue, and it's kind of at a slope, and so they want to basically build a retaining wall. This shows the actual portion of the easement they will vacate. Right over here on the west boundary, there is an easement that runs north-south. That easement is used by the city. That is for sanitary sewer pipes that are coming out of, down the Royal Towers to seventeen-hundred, but that easement stops short, the vacate stops short of that location, so it will not be an issue with it. There are no utilities in the area that's going to be vacated. We've asked for input from the various utility providers. There's no objections to vacating this easement with it. So with that, we, city staff, recommend the vacation of the easement.
Any questions? Any questions for Ben? Alright, we will throw up on a public hearing here. If anybody would care to comment on this vacation of the easement up behind the Beta Sig House, now's your chance. I will close the public hearing on this. Any other questions or are you ready to make a motion?
Mayor, I move that the Commission find that no private rights will be injured or endangered by such vacation, and that the public will suffer no loss or inconvenience thereby, and approve first reading of an ordinance vacating a portion of a utility easement located on, at Lot Two of Campus View Edition, also known as twelve-hundred Centennial Drive, Manhattan, Riley County, Kansas, Project Number VA twenty-three oh one.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve this request. Any other questions, comments? Alright, we'll call the roll, please.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Mayor Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Very good. Next item is to consider amending the Greenbrier PUD to allow for non-owner occupied short-term rentals at Stadium Place.
Good evening. Stephanie Peterson, Director of Community Development. The PUD amendment before you this evening is to amend the Greenbrier PUD, which is currently called Stadium Place Apartments. That would be to allow non-owner occupied short-term rentals as a permitted use. General location of the Stadium Place Apartments, they're just northwest of the stadium. And then taking a closer look, we're looking at the corner of Kimball and College, and you can see outlined in red the Stadium Place Apartments, which also is the same thing as the Greenbrier PUD. The proposal, the owners are looking to convert the apartments of the Stadium Place Apartments into condos. So far, three of those buildings have already been converted over to condominiums. The buildings are twenty-four hundred here on the corner, twenty-four oh one just north of that, and then twenty-four thirty. You can see that the G I S already reflects those being condo units. The reason that the PUD amendment is coming before you and looking at short-term rentals as an allowable use, typically when we have a base zoning district that the PUD is established on, it would already outline that it would, let's say for this one, if it was based on a residential, or the high-density residential zoning district, that already permits short-term rentals either through a conditional use or a limited use. So, in this case, since the PUD was established, I think, yeah, in nineteen eighty-nine, short-term rentals weren't a thing. There was no base district that it was established on. That's why it's coming before you. Should we have had, as I kind of mentioned, should we have had that base district in place, this would have gone through the Planning Board for the conditional use permit, but instead, we have to go this route. You know, or you probably recognized in the memo that Barry Beagle put together that there are several different conditions that would be placed on these short-term rentals. The property owner and I believe they might, I'm not sure if they're here tonight with us or not, they did suggest that they would have a Stadium Place STR Oversight Proposal to make sure that that property manager is really the day-to-day management of those units. So, they have been working with us to try to minimize any potential impact on the other residents living here or the surrounding property owners. With that, I, this did go to Planning Board. It was recommended for approval, seven to zero. There were no public comments at that meeting. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those. Some of them I might pass on to the property owner if they're, or the applicant, if they're present with us this evening.
Is the plan to make all of them short-term rentals, or just allow for them to be short-term rentals if necessary or desired?
Correct. The latter.
Latter, okay. Well, hopefully, the idea of being condos would solve some of that. People who want to own a place from out of town, don't be gobbling up bigger, better places for other people, maybe. Go ahead, John. You had a question?
Yeah, I was just going to say, they're still going to sell them as individual properties, but the new owner could then turn around and make them the short-term rentals, and they're just providing a management function.
Correct.
In there, and I'm sure they'll have an association or an agreement you have to agree to.
Yep, and anybody that wants to have a short-term rental, they also have to register with that property management company, and that oversight plan that they have really goes into the specifics. I will say that the M D C already regulates certain things that you cannot do. For instance, you can't rent to more than one family. You cannot have any sort of gathering, party, wedding, like, we already restrict that for any short-term rentals. That property manager could probably elaborate on other conditions that they would place on those short-term rentals.
Yeah, I found it curious. They wouldn't allow you to cater, but I mean, a lot of people cater at their own home.
That's true. Well, if it was their own home, then that is one thing. If you're doing, if you're having, you could have a party at your own home as well.
But the short-term rental person can't cater, so.
Correct, yes. And it's to prevent, it's to prevent any sort of nuisance or noise violation.
Look at us, turning into a resort town.
Really? A place to be.
Yep.
Are there other communities that have put some structure in place for short-term rentals?
Oh, yes.
Because we're, we, ours is more wide open. All you got to do is come in and, you know, does it want your property, your complex? It's, it's, it's going to change, I mean, I bet, I don't know, I didn't listen to the Planning Board, but certainly it has the potential to change the, what? The community. And this is right across from the stadium. It's not that I would have a big objection to it, but we have a lot of apartment complexes, and I could see that this, the owners could have an interest in doing this in a lot of the areas east of campus that are next to neighborhoods, and I don't think that's what we had in mind when we said that the first two blocks east of campus are going, we want those to be high-density. And so, I'm, I want to run the flag up the pole about having concerns about short-term rentals and the need to have some oversight. I don't want our community to have like a Swiss cheese kind of condition here. To me, a hotel is where people go for overnight accommodations when it's just for a weekend, and I could see, I understand the people who want to buy a condo, and they maintain it all year round, and they come in for ballgames. I don't have an issue with that. They're not overusing the property. But I, I think when there are only six or seven ballgames in a fall, during the fall, that there's the potential for, anyway, the oversight is the problem. Our hotel, there are state laws and city rules about hotels, and, but there aren't any about short-term rentals as far as I'm concerned. They're not the kind of rules that hotels have about conduct, and, and you can talk a long time about the oversight of a property manager. There are too many instances where that person's not available, and, you know, just things don't work well for the neighbors, kind of a situation. So, I, I want us to be cautious. I think that when we passed the development ordinance, we didn't necessarily envision, we were still talking about short-term rentals, and we adopted it, and, but the Commission has not ever really spoken about short-term rentals, and I think the Commission needs to have a conversation about it. I really respect the Planning Board. They didn't want to see these anymore.
Correct.
There are too many of them. It takes too much of their time. I understand that, but just that description to me is an indication that we need to get involved in some, and before they're, before it's out of control. And so, the, anyway, I just think it will, we already have instances in our community where a lot of people pile in. We have single-family neighborhoods that rent to one student, let's say, and six people live there. It's a heck of a time enforcing, and we don't enforce well, and we all know those properties because we see the six cars out there every day on a regular basis, but we don't enforce it. And I, well, we do eventually, probably. It gets bad enough. I mean, I look at Royal Towers as an indication of how long things go before there's a crisis, and then we step in to enforce it. We have, there are too many, anyway, I, I want to just put the brakes on short-term rentals until the Commission has an opportunity to have a discussion about, and consider what other communities are doing. How are they doing it? There are other college towns that have short-term rental regulations. Ours are pretty lax, I think, and we're going to get one a month or one every legislative meeting because we have a lot of apartment complexes in this town, and tonight we're doing, I don't know how many, five, six buildings, and I just think that it's not, we need to be cautious, is my admonition. I'm not going to support it. I respect the Planning Board, but I want the Commission to give this some special consideration and not just have an automatic slide right on through every, every month, every legislative meeting when we have proposals. So, I want to put the brakes on it.
Let me, let's just unpack that for a second here.
Sure.
So with, I know, for example, out there, either Heritage Ridge or the other ones across from Seco to the east, some of those units are short-term rentals in the Verbo, or not the other one, Airbnb system and stuff. So, they would have had to have registered that with the city? Nope?
They're supposed to. They're supposed to get either a conditional use permit or a limited use. Depends if the owner is occupying that property, or if it's non-owner occupied, which we're talking about here. So, they're supposed to. I, I do a little bit of investigation every now and then, just looking to see how many Airbnb, Airbnbs pop up in our community versus how many registrations. We'll call it registration for this purpose, and there's a very small percentage that actually register. I think that's a little bit of how this kind of popped up on our radar, is there was a sign that was posted of short-term rentals, and we contacted the new property owners and said, you need to, to register these units, and this is the process to do it. So, they're trying to do the right thing by going through this, this, or the PUD amendment. We know that there's a lot out there that don't have a conditional use, that don't have a limited use, but, so I can't, I don't know if those specifically are. I will say, as far as apartments, a lot of those apartment leases say you can't rent it out. So, what we're really looking at is for the condo units, that's where individual owners have the opportunity to have it be a short-term rental if they choose to.
And if you own the apartment building and you decide, okay, this one I'm going to rent, this one I'm going to short-term rental, then the owner of the apartment complex has that right to sort of short-term rental it?
They could.
You're saying the leasor, the leasee can't, can't short-term rent it out from underneath their deal?
Typically, it depends on the contract they have with their landlord, but a lot of times that language is written in there to prevent that from happening.
Okay. Yeah, so I think a lot of your concerns fall under the, the quality of the, of the property manager. If they, if the property manager is, is on the ball and not overwhelmed and can keep an eye on things, it'll probably be fine. Royal Towers, either the property manager wasn't doing a very good job, or the owner wasn't letting the property manager do a very good job, which sounds like the owner was a lot of the fault there on the Royal Towers thing, but I think that's going to be a lot of it. If you have a good quality property manager, you have a lot fewer problems than if you, somebody who's absentee like you're concerned about. John?
Yeah, I, I just think the location's good. I think we've all agreed on this. I think we've got someone who's trying to go the extra mile, set it up, follow all the rules. I read through all those restrictions. Like I said, the catering kind of gave me a little kick, and I understand it. I know I, they had that in there. So, I mean, I, I mean, to me, this is the right location. We've got someone doing all the right things, is going the extra mile. I sure wouldn't want to turn something like this down.
Alright.
I think it is, the only way Stephanie can find out if a property is being used as a short-term rental is by monitoring the Airbnb site, or by stumbling across it. Typically, we're not aware, as a city, what, what apartments and are, or any property is being used as a short, could be a house, as a short-term rental. This is right across from the campus. The campus has every intention of building a hotel right across the street. This will be in direct competition with them. I know we don't, I don't have an obligation to necessarily help the university, but I'm just saying, there's a whole row of apartments there along college and along many of our streets, and this is going, really, think about it, as a Swiss cheese kind of, a lot of holes in the, in the neighborhoods and the communities that are possible. So, anyway, I, I guess I've spoken my piece.
What is the enforcement, our ability to enforce the registration of places to short-term rents, if they're acting as short-term rental, but they're not registered? What can we do to make that happen? Is there a fee, fine?
Nothing.
We provided you all alternatives to about every first-class city in Kansas, and looked for direction on how to handle S T Rs.
Yeah. And so, if, if, the solution has been to hire somebody with the city to monitor all that, we've decided that that's not worth it, essentially?
Correct. We gave you those options. There are communities out there doing, you know, a lot, and some that aren't doing as much, but we created a matrix. We provided you that matrix, looked at all the pros and cons, and, and you, you all evaluated that and gave us direction. You weren't interested in hiring more people and spending a lot of money chasing this around. If, if you'd like to change your decision, we can bring back that matrix and you can give us direction, but to suggest we haven't talked about it is inaccurate. We have.
No, I recall that. It was, the juice wasn't worth the squeeze, and we're collecting, and we figure ninety-some percent of everything out there through the ABnBs and the free markets taking care of our tax collection.
Yeah, we know seven percent of our TGTs coming from S T Rs.
So, as long as they're paying their, their sales tax and contingent guest tax, whether they're registered or not, we're still, registered with us, they're still kind of having to, if they're part of the network of Airbnb, they're paying some of that, so.
And we have talked with Risk Reduction. They do not get hardly any calls about nuisances with S T Rs. A lot of it is more of our, our college community that create some of the nuisance or the noise violations. That is something that we look at. So, if there was some sort of, either a parking complaint or some sort of, sort of noise that was related to a short-term rental, at that point, we would address the property owner and, or confront them and say, you need to register, and here's, here's the rules that you have to follow. So, that, and a lot of our, our property owners that go through the conditional use process, they, they'll actually have noise monitors in their units so that they can get notified if their tenants or their renters are being too loud. So, we have some property, or some S T R owners that kind of go above and beyond to make sure that they're sticking within our regulations that we have set in the M D C.
Wynd, do you have something?
Yeah, I was going to just follow up on, you know, what Jason said. You know, I remember going through that discussion, and it seemed like it wasn't going to bring in any revenue. It was going to be more expensive for the city. We were going to create more regulation that really doesn't improve anything. As you just said, Stephanie, the, the system seems to work on policing it up, so, so to me, it makes absolutely no sense to just add government regulation and registration and more cost and more staff to accomplish what? There's no gain. So, I, I don't see a problem with it. I mean, and, and, you know, folks own those properties. They are paying property tax, and we're collecting that. You know, we may or may not always get the transit guest tax, but, but I don't see any harm in it. And, and, and sure, there's only a few football games, but, you know, that's the time when all the hotels are full anyway, so we probably need the extra capacity.
Alright, we'll throw this open to a public comment. Is there anybody care to comment on this amending the Greenbrier PUD? Okay, we'll close the public comment, and does anyone, anyone want to make a motion?
Approve first reading on an ordinance, amending ordinance number four-five-eight-one of Greenbrier PUD to allow for non-owner occupied short-term rentals based on the findings of the staff report and the recommendation of the Manhattan Irmond Area Planning Board.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the motion. Is there any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Morse?
No.
Mayor Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Motion carries three to one.
Alright, next item, a, consider a memorandum of understanding with the Greater Manhattan Community Foundation, establishing a new GMCF fund, being the Manhattan, yep, being the Manhattan Parks and Recreation Foundation Fund. Aaron?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Aaron Stewart, Parks and Rec Director. The item before you is a memorandum of understanding between the Greater Manhattan Community Foundation and their, they've created a, the Manhattan Parks and Recreation Foundation to help raise funds for pretty much anything Parks and Rec needs, and the M O U would provide the process of which we would go about, both collecting funds, including approval levels, and making sure that we're in compliance with all city ordinances. So, just for example, anything that would be over fifty thousand would come to the Commission for approval, and there would be sub-agreements beyond the M O U for that purpose, so.
A fifty thousand dollar expenditure or a gift?
Gift.
Okay.
So, revenue.
You may not want dirty money, is that what you're saying?
Correct. Well, it just stays in line with our purchasing policy. That's where those numbers are generated from, but this does align with the strategic plan one-point-one-zero to explore additional sources of revenue for city operations. Currently, the foundation has started with trying to capture funding for special populations programming, scholarships, and a capital campaign towards an indoor aquatic center, so. And Vern and Gail are here. If you would have questions for them, or I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Gail's title is what? Foundation President?
Chair.
Chair. Foundation Chair.
Alright. Any questions for Aaron, or Vern, or Gail? Alright, I guess we'll open it up for public comment. If anybody would care to comment on this memorandum of understanding between the city and the GMCF concerning the Manhattan Parks and Recreation Foundation Fund. I guess, I guess nobody cares to comment. Alright. Thank you, Aaron. Fantastic presentation. Everybody, every question was answered. Alright, any other questions, comments?
Just comments. Happy to see this get going. Appreciate Vern and everyone with the Community Foundation. A lot of other people have talked about it happening, and think this is a good model for us to go forward, especially when we want a lot of amenities in the city, but those cost money, and we need to find out different ways to raise those funds. So, very happy to see us get this going.
Yeah, I'm pleased to see. Yeah, I'm pleased to see that this has gotten done as quickly as it did, because we just talked about this not too long ago, and so this is some fast action. I think it's got some excellent potential. So great to see it happen.
I'm supportive. I want it to work in the worst way. And so, I hope we're giving it the right boost, and that it, that will, someday. It'll take a while to raise money, it's always slow, but looking forward to the results.
Yeah, for all the people that are saying they're huge fans of the Parks and Recreation Department and hate anything bad ever happening, that would be a great opportunity to put your money where your mouth is and help provide the programming, support, and/or, I really like the idea of the scholarships. If we're gonna try to get to, not pay to play, what's the, cost recovery models where we try to charge what it actually costs, without leaving lower-income kids behind through scholarships, through one way or another, I think this is gonna be a good step in the right direction. So, anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll move that we approve and authorize the mayor, city clerk, and city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding between the City of Manhattan and the Greater Manhattan Community Foundation regarding the Manhattan Parks and Recreation Foundation Fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the motion. Please call the roll.
Mayor Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
I'd like for you to come periodically and keep us updated on how well it's going from the foundation's side. We'll hear from the city's side, but we need,
I'm gonna say it now.
Okay, I would, I don't know if the mayor will let us.
We're ahead of schedule, come on up, you.
Okay.
State your name and.
Gail Urban, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Gail Urban, and I chair the Manhattan Parks and Recreation Foundation. We got started in April. We are a component fund of the Greater Community Foundation. We have a nine-person board, we have six ad hoc community members, Aaron being one of those, representing the city Parks and Rec Department. We've had incredible support so far in getting organized, and appreciate that you've passed this memorandum of understanding. At the moment, we have raised a little over twelve thousand dollars, mostly from our board members to cover our operating costs. Our logo development, our website development, our printed material development, all of that has been paid for now. We have set our initial three fundraising goals, the first one being a ten thousand dollar goal to fund and expand the barrier-free program through Parks and Rec. Primarily the theater, beginning with the barrier-free theater and expanding that particular program. We're gonna ask the community to fund that at a ten thousand dollar level. We also have a grant from WTC that is pending. So we'll see where that goes, if we are awarded that grant, but most likely that would be directed in that direction. So we're starting to see some corporate support that we haven't really even asked for yet. So, our group is getting organized to begin asking and to begin developing our fundraising projects. Our second project is to annually raise, our target goal is a hundred thousand dollars to fund scholarships for any child or disabled person who wants to participate in any Parks and Rec program. That is to support the cost recovery system. The third goal that we have is a fairly lofty goal, and that goal is to raise ten million dollars toward the partnership for a community aquatic center. So, any questions?
Yes, is a lot of, so a lot of the early money will be money in, money out versus endowed, or is that a hundred thousand to be endowed?
The hundred thousand would be endowed, we hope, for the, you're talking about for the scholarships specifically. Actually, that would probably be money in, money out. We'll see how well it gets funded. If we can endow it, obviously, that is always the best way to do it. But certainly, we don't want to have to hold the reins on that program until it's endowed. So, our goal is endowment as quickly as possible, but we do want to support the Parks and Recreation programs as they, as the needs come along. We are also working with Chris Curtis to develop a proposal for new scoreboards and a sponsorship program. We haven't entirely unveiled that yet, because the particulars are still getting organized.
Okay, any other questions for Gail?
No questions, just, again, thanks to you and the members of the board you had going. Sounds like you're really off and running, and just very much appreciated.
Your first, you're shooting for ten million dollars?
Ten million for the aquatic center.
Okay, and that's more for the design and development, or?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
Not necessarily.
Beginning, it's the first phase, okay, thank you.
Yes. And fundraising is available, you can go to our website and donate online.
Donate.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, our last item is discussion of the twenty twenty-three community survey results and analysis. Who's leading that? Jared?
Yeah, I'll introduce our main presenter today, Dr. Josie Schaefer. Some of you are familiar with her, we've been working with her since two thousand fifteen, when we did our first-ever community survey. Back then, we printed two thousand paper copies of the survey and mailed it across the city. Then we started to, you know, use a little technology, and we tapped into our utility billing email listserv and created a controlled sample of households through that. And over time, we're just able to reach more and more people. In two thousand nineteen, we did a combination for the first time of postcards and emails, and reached about six thousand households. And then this year, we just decided to ramp it up, and I think we had over six thousand emails plus five thousand postcards. So we had a really large sample, one that Dr. Schaefer would probably tell you, we don't need to send out that many surveys to get a good feel for the community, but we want the, you know, the households and people in the public to have every opportunity they can to take the survey. So, yep, this is our fourth one. We got a dashboard online now, much like two thousand nineteen's survey, where you can see all the results, and you can also look at some trends on how certain demographics answered questions that Dr. Schaefer's gonna show, as well as look at, you know, we're on our fourth one now, so we're able to track some of the similar questions that we ask every year, or every two years or more over time, which is some good data to see, too. But with that, I'll take, let Dr. Schaefer take it away.
Thank you so much, Jared. In two thousand fifteen, when this project started, Jared was a student of mine at Kansas State University in the Master of Public Administration Program, and now he is my boss. Just moments ago, he was sending me edits, so he does a pretty good job keeping me in line, I appreciate it. Thank you all for the opportunity. I apologize for not being able to be with you today with the start of the semester and little kids. It was a challenge to get down there. I'm honored to have worked on this project so long, to still be able to work with my former home community. I really appreciate it, and I think we did a great job doing some outreach to the community to learn about their perceptions, and I am excited to be able to share those results with you today. I'm gonna bring up the dashboard to get started. This is actually embedded on your website, the community survey. This is the interactive dashboard component. Down below, we actually have results from previous surveys. You'll see back in two thousand fifteen, we had a lot less graphic design capacity than we do today to share these results, so I'm excited to do that. If you click this link, you will see a detailed description of the methods to conduct the sampling and the outreach, our efforts to understand non-response bias, as well as bias in results from the sample received. I'll talk just a bit about that, the executive summary, and some additional analysis of qualitative results and things like that. As Jared alluded to, we did some remarkable work conducting outreach to this community. We had a total of eleven thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight households received an opportunity to take this survey. That's about half the population of households in your community. So that is pretty outstanding for our survey research. About six thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight of those were sent via email on the utilities, those were sent from the City of Manhattan, who has access to those emails, and then five thousand, we sent postcards to. We go, I explain in details how we identify those addresses to outreach to, but we focus on making sure folks that don't have an email on file with the utility addresses also have an opportunity to take this survey. So five thousand postcards were sent out in addition to the six thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight emails. We had a response rate of twenty-one point six percent, or two thousand five hundred and three surveys were returned. The response rate is comparable, if not just a tiny bit lower, to years past. That is not surprising. As you open up the survey to more people, you would expect about a twenty percent response rate is fairly common to actually a little high for survey response rates nationally. And more people, there is a whole group of people that are never going to take a survey. So as you open up to more people, you would expect a slightly lower response rate. But the most ever surveys received, two thousand five hundred and three responses, is the most ever received. Doing some analysis to say then, what is, people are interested in the margin of error, right? When we see a percentage, ninety-five percent said it was a great place to live, is that actually the percentage? We can say that ninety-five percent of the time, the range of opinions that we see in this sample will be precise to the population within plus or minus two percentage points. That's how large a response it is, a sample compared to our population. We feel very confident that these results are plus or minus two for most of the questions that you'll see. At one point, I will show you survey results over time, going back to two thousand fifteen, when we had fewer people giving surveys. So in that case, we had a plus or minus five margin of error. So when you are comparing over time, it is important to take that into account. We're actually more confident about the location of these responses than we were in the years past. We are certainly narrowing in, but also opinions change over time, and we're serving different people, so you'll see some variation there as well. In the methods report, I talk about several additional steps we took to compare who responded to the survey to national demographics from the United States Census Bureau's American Community Survey. To make sure that we are reaching all portions of this population, we do fairly well, but we do caution interpretation of the results for those eighteen to twenty-four, those that earn less than twenty-five thousand dollars a year, and those that rent as compared to own their homes. And I'll show you those demographics in a little bit. So I'm just gonna walk you through some highlights from the community survey in the dashboard. I have to tell you that if you look at it online, the coloring is a little bit different than my screen. I have a big window behind me, and the contrast doesn't look as good as it might on your screen. So, general perceptions, these are many questions we've asked over time. You'll see overall quality of life, I tend to look at the purple, very satisfied and satisfied, and we have some pretty high responses, overall quality of neighborhood as well, really positive about safety in the city of Manhattan, Kansas. Availability of quality jobs, and overall cost of living, both areas with slightly less high levels of satisfaction. We can look at some of those, too. We asked about some of the city services that we don't go into much detail on, fire protection, code enforcement, Manhattan Regional Airport, utility billing, fairly high satisfaction overall. And then we wanted to differentiate non-city services. These are elements of the city that add to the quality of life, but that you all do not have much control over. So healthcare services, mental health, police services, really high satisfaction there, and public education also fairly strong. This white on my screen, I think it might be gray if you look at it on the website, those are the don't knows. And we really appreciate when people don't evaluate things they don't know. So you'll see on some of these services, right, you have larger don't know. But that still gives you a good idea of how people are using services around your city and proceed. Parks and Recreation was a hot topic in the survey this year. We actually have a whole set of supplemental questions that Jared shared with the Parks and Recreation Board already. So those are towards the end, but these are the questions we've consistently asked on the community survey over time. General satisfaction, quality of parks, availability of parks, fairly strong. There are, so here, quality of adult and youth athletic programs, really large don't know. So people that don't necessarily use the services, you can also see that down here where we ask, do you use the services? Again, users of services tend to actually be more positive about the services they, about the services. But largely, fairly strong satisfaction across a range of Parks and Recreation topics. We also asked folks to prioritize, of those services that they just rated, which ones are high priority to you? And here you see, most people chose quality of parks in the city, youth athletic programs, and connectivity of trails were all really important topics, high priorities for folks. You can even take sort of that big group at the top before it breaks off there, as a way to give some direction about what people want. Moving on to public works. Generally, there is, so I'll say quality and timeliness of snow removal, quality of drinking water, very high satisfaction. Overall ease of traveling through the city, main city streets and thoroughfares were less levels of satisfaction. I'll actually talk about that a little bit more. When we go through the results over time, you'll see that there are, there is a lot of angst about construction and road construction and road quality and repair. But a lot of it was really about communication from the city about when those things were happening. So, something that could actually be fairly easily fixed, right? Road construction is gonna happen, I'm just here in Nebraska, so we have the same pothole issue that you all do. But letting people know when you are patching and maintaining them is one quick way to bring a little bit more satisfaction to those areas. Maintenance of main city streets and thoroughfares was an extremely high priority. This is, many, many people that took the survey chose this not only as a, of their top three priority, but their number one top priority, and so in that way, it's an area of low satisfaction right here, and a high priority. So it should certainly be something that you all are thinking about when trying to meet the needs of your residents. Same set of governing questions we ask every year, and they're a little bit about the elected officials as well as the city. Really strong for our customer service from city employees, so we love to hear that. When we get down here to understand how my tax dollars are used, receive good value for tax dollars, these levels of satisfaction are a little bit lower than actually we've seen from in the past, and compared to other elements of the survey. Here, real drop-off there. So governing was a pretty hot topic this year, and something to be aware of. We can talk more about that as well. Here's where I think you really have the opportunity. This is in communication. So timeliness of information regarding action by the city commission, not as satisfied as we'd like to see. And overall availability of information about city programs and services, again, a little off. That, right, that's not really about the choices you make, but how you communicate those choices, how available, timely, and well those are communicated. So that's actually something you can fix fairly easily, and in sort of research on local government, communication builds trust, right? Until you have to share the information, people have to understand the information, and then as a result, even if they disagree with you, they trust you a little more because you put that information out. So here's a real opportunity. We asked how people receive information about the city, and word of mouth was the highest one. And that's, I would say, concerning, because you wanna control some of that messaging, let people know exactly why you did what you did. So I'm not surprised then, that some of those communications ratings were lower. The number one way that people want to receive information is city social media accounts, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, et cetera, is how we worded it on there. That's really interesting. I think that's very new in local government. I mean, we've all been using social media for a fairly long time now, but that is the preferred method of communication for a fair amount of your residents. And so, to the extent that you can use those channels to timely communicate information, I would bet you could see some changes, at least here in the communications page, as well as overall in governing. We asked about growth and future development, a couple different projects. Development of an indoor aquatic center, as you all were just discussing. You will see very strong support. That's actually strong support, that dark purple, that's probably the biggest bar you'll see, and then another big group that do support that. Actually, in the qualitative results, we even heard a little frustration in that we can talk about. in that we can talk about for a really long time, but they're not seeing much action towards that. So really excited to hear that presentation right from before mine. We asked about development and redevelopment along Highway 24. You'll see a big group that don't know there. We'll look at some results by neighborhood. That'll make sense to you more, right? Not everybody is in that area all the time. Then we asked a question about Aggieville. And we gave them choices particularly around Morrow Street and the level of pedestrian versus road traffic. And you do see some really split responses. And Aggieville was another sort of, not necessarily contentious, but an area where you saw a lot of different opinions. So I'm not surprised that they're kind of split here. So the largest one was to permanently close off Morrow Street to traffic and parking and create a pedestrian-only zone. The next option though was keep traffic and some parking, but still update the sidewalks. Two ends of the spectrum. You had one here in the middle that actually didn't get a lot. Keep traffic, but eliminate on-street parking. And then a little bit of a group that didn't know. So I cannot tell you a very clear way forward on Aggieville. And I would say it's probably an area where you're going to have a little more outreach and communication because they're fairly split. We asked some questions about housing, both current housing and housing development, as well as workforce housing in the future. So availability of housing that you can afford, variety of housing types, condition and maintenance of housing in your neighborhood, the higher satisfaction. We're actually going to look at this question a lot when we break it down by demographics and neighborhood. You'll see some real difference there. But yeah, positive for sure. And then in 2020, voters approved a portion of local sales tax revenue for workforce housing initiatives. So we gave some options on what those workforce housing initiatives could be to get a sense of support. Financial assistance to purchase workforce housing for first-time buyers. I actually don't like the term workforce housing. I use middle-income housing here in Nebraska, as well as in Kansas. Pretty much everyone works, so it doesn't necessarily say who we're talking to. But so helping first-time home buyers purchase those, sorry, was the strongest. But you actually have a fair amount of support for initiatives across the board. So I think, and I'm not surprised then that it passed because there's real interest in this topic and real interest in making some headway in a couple different ways. Just some overview of who responded to this survey before we get into looking at differences by questions. So the majority of folks did own as compared to rent, I will say. And then on this other one, we actually look at K-State students versus not. We, the email survey went out early April. The mail survey, we sent postcards in bulk mail and they didn't hit until later than we thought, not till May. And so we may have doing a spring survey as compared to a fall survey, which is normally our preference, may have impacted the number of students that can respond. You already have a lot of movement by May of those students, so not surprised there. So more owners than renters, a couple more female than male. I don't really see a lot of differences in the gender results, so we won't break those down. More white than any other race or ethnicity. And Manhattan as a community is more white, is majority white. But these were more than when we compare to the demographics of the survey as a whole. Still didn't see much differences in those. So I don't spend too much time on it at all. So we asked about the years that they lived in Manhattan, Kansas. And actually, most people lived here 10 years or more that took the survey. That was the largest group by far. And I believe that was the largest group of those residents from the past as well. And years planned to live in Manhattan, Kansas. Most people do plan to live in Manhattan, Kansas for 10 years or more. So great sign for the future. Again, small number of Kansas State students. We looked at the educational attainment of respondents. Most were graduate or professional degree. Makes a little bit of sense based on both who takes surveys and then a large portion of your population being related to the university. Different age groups. Like I said, the 18 to 24, much smaller than the actual portion of the population that is in your community. So we don't feel great about capturing their responses, but something we can work on in the future. And service members, not, just a few folks that were active service members that responded. So we can look at a whole range of questions by these demographic groups. So here are those age groups and a set of questions. So I just want to pick out some highlights for you. So Aggieville, a hot topic. So you can see the, little bit younger tend to like that closing off Morrow Street. But you had a fair mix there. I think I also just want to show workforce housing support. Some of these younger age groups were really supportive of some initiatives in that area. Questions by gender, I didn't really identify a lot of strong differences, so I won't spend time there. Owners and renters, we really do see some difference in their opinions around housing. So availability of a variety of housing types, renters feel a little less so. Availability of housing your household can afford. Renters feel less or more unsatisfied by that. Condition and maintenance of housing in your neighborhood, less satisfied than owners. So certainly something to look at there. You also saw that those similar sort of reactions in the workforce housing, renters being really strongly supportive of a whole range of initiatives to produce more housing for that group. Let's look at questions by a level of educational attainment. Actually, Aggieville is another one where that group might, the more educated group, possibly associated with the university, might be more interested in what's happening in Aggieville. And there you do see them being more supportive of permanently closing off Morrow Street to traffic. So you do see them being a little bit more positive about the communications coming out of the city. So maybe slightly more aware of what's coming from you all or being able to capture that information a little bit quicker. That's some of the highlights there. But again, you can see any of these questions by those demographics. So something to look at. Questions by income, I wanted to show just sort of general perceptions. So this last group is prefer not to say. You will see that as income goes up, people tend to be more satisfied. I think that's both probably an outcome of having more income, but their ability to enjoy the city and all it has to offer in a slightly different way. And that's pretty much true for all of those questions, right? As income comes up, there is some more positive perceptions around the city. Also, a way to think about how to respond to the survey, right? Who is feeling less satisfied, who's feeling less safe? And how do we identify those groups and act for them? So some interesting things to see there. We can also look at questions by neighborhood. We have segmented the city into 10 neighborhoods. This is the exact same map I think we've been using since 2015. So, yeah, I didn't label it too well, but you can see a fair amount of questions will vary by neighborhood. So I like to look at specifically to start the ones by neighborhood. So satisfaction with the availability of parks in your neighborhood. Folks, we're generally satisfied with this, but when we break it down by neighborhood, you see some really strong differences. Some are very satisfied and many are less or so. So it gives you an idea of how different, how different locations in the city impact your experience. Condition of maintenance and housing in your neighborhood. We see some really strong differences, really positive here on this eastern fringe. And then the core is not seeing the same thing when it comes to condition and maintenance of housing. Overall quality of your neighborhood, similar pattern, right? With the core feeling a little less satisfied. Again, looking at overall ease of traveling through the city, right? So we can look at maintenance of main city streets and thoroughfares. Now again, this was fairly negative, but you see differences across neighborhood again. So indicating where maybe some of the particular problems are. Yeah, so you can see a whole, oh, actually, so support for development, right? This was kind of lower, but you can see that neighborhoods that are closer to it are maybe a little bit more excited by that possibility than others. I want to look at the survey results over time. So if you go back to, I don't know if I can call one here. So if you go back to what I was saying at the beginning about the methods, every year we have gotten more people to respond to the survey. And as more people respond to the survey, our sample goes up. So our sample to population ratio goes down and we have more confidence that the results are not bad. So you can't perfectly compare this 95% in 2015. In 2015 to 2023, it's a different set of residents. Things have changed. I think we see some real pre and post-COVID effects in all survey research, right? A general polarization and satisfaction and how lots of different governments handled that situation. And so there are some changes over time. The city council has changed over time. I only know a couple of you now. So it's not surprising that it would change. But also, if you think about our methods, back in 2015, this was plus or minus five. So bring that down to 90% and we're actually right where we are now, right? Because this is plus or minus two. So I want you to, I think it's really exciting to be able to compare the survey over time. And there are some areas where I know that you all have spent a lot of time working. So for instance, all right, we put money in here, I can't find it. Quality of storm water. And storm water, infrastructure, and drainage. Just a couple of years ago, this was a major push by the city council to do a lot of work, a lot of different work related to that. And it looks to me like it paid off, right? After coming down to a low, and I would say out of the margin of error, it is back up. Are people very excited about storm water infrastructure or drainage? Not, not really, but it's back up. So I think this is an area where you can think about, what do you want to focus on? And how do we get that up over time? But I also just like caution in looking at some of these that have really come down. This is probably more precise than it was back in 2015. And I think you're also seeing, right, the culmination of a lot of trends over time. I know that I understand how my tax dollars and fees are spent. It's been something that's always been a hot topic. I can tell you in the qualitative results, right? Property taxes get talked about a lot. So I'm not surprised that folks feel a little bit negative about these. So I, I think it's really important to look at. I think it's really exciting to be a part of this project, to see that trend over time. But it's also important to just sort of calibrate. Things change and so it's not that surprising that some of them are like that. Then finally, you have the Parks and Rec question supplement. I'm not going to spend too much time on that. We asked a whole bunch of questions about that. And we got some really interesting results. I'm always amazed by the residents and their willingness to provide us sort of dense and very thoughtful feedback. There were a couple of questions that are really like in the budget weeds in this section. And, you know, they, they gave us great, great input and great thoughts about the future of the city. So excited for that. Can I answer any questions?
Yeah, I have a question for you. I think, I think the survey is really good for some of the things you just showed where people are more satisfied or where we trended. But I always find these surveys difficult when you have, and I'll just use it because it makes a good example, something like the aquatic center and the real strong support on that. But then you see that there's also the talk of our high cost of living in town. Of course, we hear about it as, you know, property taxes and things like that. You know, it would be nice to somehow sensitize that survey to pose the question, yes, you strongly support, but how much would you be willing to pay to get that? Would you, I mean, obviously you'd want to be a little more specific. Would you willing to take a substantial increase in, in taxes and debt in order to get that? That one's a good example because it's a very large price tag to build and a very large price tag to run on an ongoing basis. Yet there's this really strong support.
So it is an excellent point. To be fair, we did talk about that. So in years past, we have, you know, talked about sales tax ballot initiatives and, you know, things like that, the way we talked about the workforce housing and the different programs. So we did talk a bit about a sort of willingness to pay question. The problem is it's, it's very hard to come up with a dollar, a dollar figure, right? Like how much is this really going to cost a set of residents? And as I understand it, there are plans, but there are not numbers necessarily associated with it. So we really backed off from that. And also knowing, like the presentation before, there are other initiatives to come up with that. So it is a challenge. You know, it's exactly what we see. People are, you know, satisfied and supportive, but they also don't love this and they don't love that. That's why I'd like to say I'd really focus on the communications piece. Because that is a piece that, while I might not like paying my property taxes, and to be fair, I don't like paying my property taxes, when I understand more about how my property taxes are used and what that means in my case, or my kids' public schools, or what that means for road construction. Maybe they still don't like it, but they understand it. So you might still get, we have a high cost of living, but they might feel more satisfied in their response to that question. I understand how my tax dollars are used. So I, that's exactly what people do, right? I want this, but I can't afford this. But I'm not going to put those two together for you. But to the extent that you can communicate that to folks, I think that's a real opportunity. Just letting people know, this is what it's going to cost and this is what has to happen in order to make it work.
You see an interesting test on that to follow up on John's question. You know, a lot, a lot of folks want to have that indoor aquatic center. But when it was put up there as a sales tax initiative, it failed. It would be interesting to see if, if we put it back on the ballot again, will it fail again? Because you got all these folks that say they support it, but when it comes time to committing money, we don't seem to get the votes. Because probably the only way to fund that would be to renew the quality of life sales tax that's fixing Seaco Park and the rec centers. And then collect that money for the aquatic center. And then with help from the Manhattan Community Foundation, maybe it will happen, but it'll be several years out.
I think your, your quote, Dr. Schaefer of the day is, "There's not a clear path forward for Aggieville." Which is the, the story of our, our lives is, because, yeah, the community can't decide what they want. Aggieville can't decide what they want. It's, it's, yeah, 40% wants something, 40% wants something different. And then 20% of people don't know what the question meant. And so it's a, yeah, I don't know what, yeah, there's, surveys are pretty helpful in some things and they're, yeah, they just point out the obvious the rest of the time. And so, but I think you got some, yeah, good information here. We don't, it does, it'll help us with some, some items and it'll continue to show us that we have unsolvable problems in other areas. Apparently unsolvable problems, which we're going to have to acquire a new level of thinking or cooperation and, and such to get a, a solution for.
Kind of a paradox too, because the majority of the respondents were homeowners. But then there's not a clear understanding of taxes. That understanding is going down according to the, the survey. But we just have this new revenue neutral thing that doesn't, the explanation's still going, still going down. So it's not, it's not giving the public a clear, a clearer understanding of the tax process.
Well, I hope we're making progress on what I've been talking about the past couple meetings on, on that exact issue, getting that updated page up there on the mill levies for, across the board. Because I really think that will help solve the communications issue because people can then really see, you know, what it is. Because, you know, as Jason, you keep pointing out, most of the cities run on sales tax and property tax is a very small part of the budget.
All right, Dr. Schaefer, hang on a second here. I'm going to see if there's anybody in the public that want to comment on this or maybe have a question. Now's your chance, if you guys want to have any public input on the survey results that we talked about. We got one here, at least.
Good evening, Dennis Cook. I'm the director for the Aggieville Business Association. Uh, I, number one, just, you know, I'd like to thank you for including Aggieville into the community survey. That's great. Uh, we're always interested in what everybody's in, in, input is on that. Um, but as, as we take a look at that, it's, uh, you know, you know, we know that's, that's going to be skewed a little bit towards, you know, towards, you know, towards the user. And, uh, when we think about it, we have to think about, about the businesses and the impact that we have. Uh, so, you know, I did, I did just some quick looking at it today, and just what we've been talking about as far as maybe a pedestrian area on, on 12th Street from Morrow to Laramie, and then, and then, and then according to the survey, talking about what we would do with Morrow. Uh, I can tell you that adding those up, uh, that, the, that directly, indirectly, it's even more, but directly, that impacts 49 businesses. And with the 49 businesses directly impacted, that would also directly impact 20 property owners who pay property taxes. And, um, um, so, you know, we put out some information today, just to let people know that this is coming up. And, you know, and, and I got, I got immediate response back, you know, about, uh, you know, hopefully, you know, this isn't, uh, the beginning of a, of a, of a path that, that doesn't include asking the businesses and the business, and the property owners about what's, what, what they would like to see going on. Uh, so, uh, I, I guess at just, at this point, I'm not, not arguing, you know, you, you put out a survey, people answer the survey, that, that, those are your answers. Uh, I would just say that if, um, if the city is truly interested in knowing maybe, you know, a direction, that, a pathway, uh, because, you know, th, these things can be really successful, but there'd be a whole lot of change, and, and people aren't ready for that. Uh, but we would be, uh, you know, if it was, if it was a, a concern that you need to know something quicker on that, we would be happy to do a survey of our own, uh, just going directly to the business owners and the property owners and breaking those out. And, you know, which is with the question of, uh, you know, basically, as, as a survey was done, uh, which I thought was good, would you prefer, you know, Morrow Street to remain as it is with parking and traffic? Or, you know, so you just kind of click off the one you like. Or would you prefer Morrow to allow traffic but reduce parking? Or would you prefer Morrow to allow traffic and have no parking? Or would you prefer Morrow to be pedestrian-only? Kind of, here's, here's your choices. And, uh, you know, and one of the things I'd say is just with the redevelopment that we've had going on down there, um, you know, there's been great foresight to add in those bollards, uh, that, that can, that can be popped up when we want to, to restrict all traffic, get it down to pedestrian-only. And I think that's the, uh, at this moment, that's the preferred model, is to do that so that we have, we have both. We have, we have traffic, we have parking, we have businesses down there that need parking daytime, close to them, et cetera. But if, but if we have events and things like that, we can, we can use the bollards. Now we have bollards, uh, on, on 12th Street, uh, just, you know, just, just inside the courtyard by Marriott. Now we have bollards up on North Manhattan Avenue, up close to Blumenton, and we have bollards again on North Manhattan Avenue, uh, close to Laramie Street. So we're getting closer and closer to being able to, just by bollards, actually shutting it down for, for, for special events. And, uh, and we kind of like, we kind of like having all those options. So I would just say, you know, thank you for including us in the survey, but if there's a, if this is really a discussion about where to go with Aggieville, uh, we would like to include the businesses and the, and the property owners. Thank you.
This isn't a discussion about what we're going to do about Aggieville.
I know.
All right, very good.
Okay, well, then never mind.
There we go. All right. Anybody else? Cam? Nope. Okay. We will, well.
Cam Ward, I'm on the board directors for the Aggieville Business Association. I look back on the 2019 survey. Seventy-five percent of respondents supported or strongly supported construction of the Aggieville parking garage. So I just kind of echo Dennis's thoughts that, like, sometimes you put this out there, you get a certain demographic of survey respondents that thinks something is going to be really great. Um, I think that if you check the city's social media, like back in January, you'd probably say that not 75% of people were happy with the garage. And I know the city's working on making some improvements with how it's run, but just, I'm going to echo Dennis's thoughts. Talk to us down in Aggieville, just like with any of these other things. Make sure that when we're putting something out on the city website, that this is what the public thinks, that there's some strings attached to that, and there's some clear communication of how that data came to be. Because obviously, if you legislate and make decisions based on the survey data, we're going to run into some more problems. So, thanks.
Very good. Anybody else? All right, we'll close public comment. Dr. Schaefer, you got anything else for us?
Well, thank you so much for the opportunity to do the survey again and to present. I think the most important thing that you all could do to make sure that the survey has the impact that you want and that you're getting quality information is to talk about it, to let people know that there is a survey, we've received results, we want your feedback, we want more feedback. Um, and that'll help prep people for the next time we do a survey, as well as give you some talking points to have just the conversation that you heard. Here's what some residents said, but in action, sometimes it is a little bit different. So thank you.
All right. Any other questions for her? Jared, you got anything else? All right. Well, thank you so much. Um, I guess that's the end of the discussion. Is there any, if there's nothing else to talk about, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Okay, I move to adjourn the August 15th, 2023 city commission meeting.
For a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn, please call the roll.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Mayor Hassel?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Meeting adjourned. We're out of here.